Go ahead and come back in to our work session at this time at ten, twelve. And we're gonna deviate a little bit from the agenda. Jeff, my boy. Thank you. We're gonna deviate just a little bit from the schedule and we're gonna move on to the town of Lake annexation request at this time, so we'll turn it over to Roberta.
Sort of, sort of, sort of. Well, I just, first of all, wanna thank all of you. This is for us, and this is for you. We have been working on some annex. We've had some people up for requests annexation into the town. And part of the agreement with Red Rock was to annex Cavernous Road. And also we have Orages that wants to annex into the town. And everybody's, they've all signed a consent to annexation. And we felt that because we were doing several annexations, it would be beneficial to the town if the cost a little bit more equitable if we would also annex River to Aden, rest of it, and S Street, Aden, or Street, which is, and so that's what we're here for you to request. And I've asked Darryl and Jeff to come forward and present what we need. But we really thought that would be a good time to do it when we could do it all at one time, so.
Okay.
And let me say the rest of Roberta, that would be from Highway one forty.
One forty, mhm.
Down to Stock Drive.
Correct, mhm.
And the S Street, Atlanta, you and Eric, speed's up there.
Thanks. But yeah, I think it would be good to just get it all done. We do have public earth, you know, utilities in those streets, so that's also, we maintain it, so, earth, utilities, so.
Well, the question on S Street, is the dark one you proposed annexing there?
Mm-hmm.
One up, down to Third.
It's already in it.
The rest is, that's under my plan for the question.
Okay.
So you wanna?
Darryl.
Sure.
Well, as Roberta noted, there's, there was three areas the town was gonna annex. I gave you a copy of the existing boundaries. You can have and take a look at the areas who were annexing and the pointers didn't show up.
That's true. You're not the first one to have that problem, Darryl.
Or the second. The area on the Red Rock project, including Cavernous Lane to be annexed, since that's now an urban growth boundary. If you remember, this section was taken out of the urban growth boundary in order to so a Red Rock could add on there. The other ones, S Street, most of S Street is annexed, there's a short little distance there that isn't. Also, Riverdale Avenue from Highway one forty down to Stock Drive. That includes that area that the county built a man camp on, whenever that was, four, five years ago. So the other, the other maps are just details. Go ahead to the next one, Darryl.
Sorry, I'm gonna...
S Street. I may, I must have been wrong. Okay, no, I'm right. Go ahead. On this one, it looks like you're a little short, so it is fairly long.
Yeah, it is fairly long. That other map's a different scale. This is the town property here on S. There's a well and stuff located. There's town utilities out the rest of S. Some of these people, I'm not sure, one or two have picked up some, up here have picked up some utilities to leave sign consent to annex, so. Maybe that wasn't marked right. I told you can't. Here's the existing boundaries. So there's only a short section of S, I guess it is annexed down source to Third Street. So the remainder of S used to kinda end in the city system. Kind of confusing. Riverdale all the way includes that man camp area to build a man camp. And the next one? That's a solar site we're just putting in. There's just a little strip, this little triangle strip that was part of the OVL land company subdivisions and those were put in back in the early nineteen hundreds. This strip is no man's land now. Wasn't dedicated, it wasn't dedicated with the streets on the platform, the OVL, so it was just left there. Right now, it's tax allotted to the county. And I assume at some point, the county will probably turn that over to the city to let into these streets. And the last one is Red Rock.
Before you go there, back to the Orages. They can elaborate, but they, another company, E.T. Camper has bought that.
Bought them, yes.
And so it's E.T. now.
Yeah.
But I still like these all.
Yeah. Yeah, they also, I guess they bought them all. They bought the one over at Merrill.
Also, on the man camp, when we got that going, we kinda did agree to annex at some time, so, to gain water and sewer.
Sewer, yeah. And the last one is the Red Rock boundary, or the urban growth boundary was extended in Cavernous.
My question, not about Red Rock, email, I don't know if Roberta got to see my email. Primarily for, if these roads are brought in and creates circle around properties, will that force annexation of those property owners, or will they have a choice to annex or not?
Which area is that?
Thank you, talking about the area. Go up to the north one, Riverdale Avenue one. There's some areas that are outside there.
Yeah, and I need to disclose and declare, I own properties within that area. So I need to disclose that. I'm able to still, because I'm not gonna financially gain from this, but I need to disclose that there's a potential conflict there. I'm still able, to my knowledge, vote and participate on this. I'll have more clarification from our legal counsel tomorrow. But my question is, is if you block this up, and I'll use me as an example, because I've already disclosed that, will I now be mandatory to be annexed into the city? Or will I still be under county taxation?
Going to the city, right?
If the, if the city, if the city chose to, yes, that would create what's called an island, that could, that, that would take, that process for residential property would take a minimum of three years down the road. There's also several people in these properties that have already, the homeowners have already agreed annex, so we already have their consents already. Any of the, I would say, we've been with them last ten or fifteen years, anybody that's gotten city services out that direction. We, like most cities, if you get services from us, we mandate, many are consent to annex. Some of the older stuff in the seventies and early eighties, we weren't doing that. That's pretty much the policy as far as I know. So a lot of those property owners have already signed if they're getting city sewer and water.
Do you know if you've signed an agreement?
I'm not sure I fully understood that. I was sort of looking for yes or no. Is this, if you're within that area and it becomes an island?
Correct.
Will the people within there have a choice, or can the town just say?
The town would just say, we're in it.
You're part of the town now and you're taxed at the town rate.
Correct. If the section is, no, the boundary has to be no more than twenty-five percent public right of way. So if that is not, if that isn't met, then you can't do that on annexation. The surrounding island has to be fully surrounded by town property and no more than twenty-five percent can be roadways. But otherwise, yes. If the town should choose to do that, they would have that opportunity.
The town does have other islands. There's one down by Head Start. It's an island, please annex it. I don't know why, but that's the way it works, so. And it's still not annexed.
That was a development many years ago. The grant and the waters taken down where that island is, is where the Head Start is. And it isn't annexed in, I thought it was what?
Head Start's annexed in. It's the, can you go back, is it on the back?
But yeah, I see. So for the people, and I use myself as an example, because it's easier to pick on myself than other people in there. People don't like to be told that you will, they'd rather have the option of consenting to annexation or not. So if it creates this island and the town intent is to say, now you are part of the town, now you'll pay town taxes, I think that we as a board may have quite a few people coming to discuss now. So I just wanted to sort of find out what the town can anticipate, if an island is created.
There you go, right there. Right, right off of M Street, there's some resident, there's some residential properties that want to be annexed.
But the answer to Commissioner Winters is, if it is fully impeded, the town at some time, if so choose, can mandates annexation of all within there.
How long is more, no more than twenty-five percent of the surrounding territory is public right of way?
So does it, does one specific, specific to the one I'm talking about, is it three to twenty-five percent criteria?
I'm not entirely sure, because I think that I...
I guess we'd have to look at that, Brad. I would guess that it would. You know, just looking at the map.
And so that's that one specifically that I'm talking about. So you brought all the requests forward, so we could accept, one, two, three, all are partials, is why you're bringing it forward. You prefer everything to be...
That's what we felt would be more economical. We do have all at once, it's going to be on, you know, at the lowest cost.
Some of these folks have already signed consent, so that is charged to the folks that are, that sign consents. So what we're trying to do is keep the cost down, make it multiple projects at once, so that we don't have a lot of small, multiple smaller parcels having to pay for...
So just to, I guess maybe a budgetary question is, generally, we're pretty willing to get rid of the cost of maintaining roads, overlays, snowplow and everything. If you were taking on in this much road system, I guess you'd be, you must have the budget to be able to maintain them to a certain level.
Correct.
We wouldn't be doing this if that was the case.
We would be forced to be.
And part of Roberta's designated, that's an ike or trail, that would be maintained.
Probably from Third Street, is that the section, Third Street south?
So I might be confused on this. I'm gonna go back to Commissioner Winters' question on this property that doesn't appear that might be the twenty-five, might be the twenty-five percent that's in the center. Why wasn't that proposed at this time? Instead of the, why wasn't that proposed to be annexed in? As opposed to the ability of this others annexing, that you might have the ability by, by rule to just then force the annexation?
You can't, you can't do, those two cannot be done at the same time.
Well, I'm not talking about the same two processes. I'm wondering, I'm just curious, because I don't know. Why was this not proposed to be annexed in to truly mark it up?
That's already in the town. That's commercial, yes.
Yes.
All of this.
Yes, sorry, and...
Okay.
If you're looking at that map, Mr. Shannon, it's block ninety-seven, ninety-six, sixty-five, sixty-four, sixty-three and sixty-two, that section, that is not annexed.
Say those again.
Yeah, ninety-seven.
Okay.
Ninety-seven, ninety-six. Sixty-five, sixty-four, sixty-three, this, this part.
Yeah, I understood that's what we're being asked about, but this is...
Yeah, that's where, so we're...
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you.
I have a question, a point of clarification. To go back to the first map, you just had it up a minute ago with the list of the entire town, sorry. The, the area on, I wanna make sure I understand, a statement, something about the area on M Street adjacent to where Red Rock will be, where the Hall Safe building is, is that in or out of the urban growth boundary?
It's in the urban growth boundary.
Are you proposing to take it out?
No.
Okay. That's what I need to think.
No, I think the earlier statement was, as part of being the Red Rock process there, they had to exchange land out of the urban growth boundary to bring Red Rock in.
They had to change the urban growth boundary line.
Correct.
Yep.
And this, part of the reason for that is, I re-narralled the news, you've had your flats project over in Clamath that got in all kinds of trouble for not doing an exchange because the state organ seems to be really clamping down on it. You've got a bunch of unused UGV urban growth boundary property and then you're adding more to it, you better be kinda switching one out for the other. So Luba's taking a much harsher look at those kind of things.
Yes.
Yes.
So what, what happens when they're changed and, like, people have farm animals type thing and then they're annexed into the city limits? What happens to...
All the city ordinance then?
Yeah. So they're now, to get rid of them and kids that keep their forty channels and stuff like that out there on Riverdale, that type of stuff?
You'd have to ask the town, ask their ordinance if they escape you.
Right now, that, yeah, okay.
I think the town has allowed some, some existing uses to stay.
Yeah.
If they're existing. I know when the annexation was done, out there, through the Sommeal that direction out there, there was some things put in, the annexation ordinance to that effect, it was done.
And the same thing occurred with the annexation of fourth second group property, because they're an agricultural use that's normally unpermitted, so there's flexibility that can be put into that. It just can't be expanded beyond what was currently, it's a grandfather, so it's not something that can be expanded beyond what's currently used.
Interesting. Fourth second group have percher permitted in, but cannot expand the upper portion use.
Correct. And they were, they went through a variance process to do that. They applied for special use permit, went through a variance process. So there is some planning that can be done to amend some of that, just on a case by case basis. It is something the town needs to look at at some point for updating its code, because again, we're a little, we're in a little different position than we were twenty years ago, it's about some, it's about the fact. Again, we're past concerns of having a, so we try to raise cattle in the middle of the residential areas down town.
Mr. Assessor, to put you on the spot.
Yes, sir.
In comparison taxation, and you can use mine as an example, compared to county taxation in urban growth boundary, what kind of jump would it be of?
The TCA core area for Town Lake is seven oh one. Tax rate's around thirteen dollars and change per thousand, or twenty dollars per thousand. Seven oh five, which is annexed out, is around thirteen dollars. So it's gonna raise taxes approximately seven dollars per thousand of assessed value.
So a hundred thousand dollars would be seven hundred dollars.
Twenty dollars per thousand assessed value change.
Would you say, Dave?
Could raise assessed value around seven dollars per thousand.
On the question that Jennifer, if they have some that the town could, but how probable would it sound?
From my position, if, but this is my personal side, I think that if they had it right now, but I don't think I'd want to change that right now. You know, maybe if there got to be a lot of development and a lot of housing next to it, that could be a different issue years down the road, but that's how I vote. I would not push to change the use if we did consent, you know, if it did come into the town.
Yeah, because years ago, we had one in Missouri when it was annexed in, and the town signed off on an ag exempt permit when it was annexed into the city limits, so I was interested to know. It was kind of odd how that would go.
Can you point to Lakeview Solar area?
Yep. Tell us where there's a restricted grant water use area. Tell us hashed there. At this line, you know.
My piece of solar is all this area right here. Okay. Because I don't think that quite matches up, at least I can give a matchup with this. Well, sorry, it does make a job. Okay, gotcha. Okay.
So you're, you're overhashed it.
Yeah.
Now that, that hashes, on the zoning map, that hashes that groundwater restriction area. That is a little, and I probably should have taken that off there.
And the roads that surround that are?
Rabbit Hill and Missouri.
Yeah.
Would they be annexed?
I don't think we have Missouri.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't say anything about this particular...
No, the, the dirt request.
Or Rabbit, or Rabbit Hill.
Yeah.
I don't, those, those aren't included right now.
So the town wouldn't take over the maintenance of those?
Missouri's already in.
Yeah, that's what I thought, Missouri is already in.
Well, Missouri's already in from Riverdale East, where we saw it.
Yeah. But west and around the corner.
It is, no.
So Darryl, when you're scrolling up there, all that yellow is?
Yeah, all that, oops. And this isn't official, so there might be a couple errors, but this is, I've attempted to redraw what Darryl and the town have, about, this town map news. So that, that's the area we're talking about right now.
Yeah, and the stuff south of it.
And we're not including the roads.
But the stuff south of there, can you scroll that up?
That's already...
That's already in the town. Anything in color right now is in the town already.
Okay, and so Missouri is, is it the blue?
The blue.
And it's not included, the red on Rabbit Hill, it's not included. I mean, that's...
Yeah, where the red is just the urban growth boundary lines and also enterprise lines.
Okay. The, the one part I believe you're missing is the long, Roberta, that you are, we've already annexed ten years ago, only took in half a block on the west side of the road. Creates a real issue when people wanna vacate an alley or anything because of, by the OVL locks, half goes each way. So that's something you might want to look at that creates issues as people come before us to vacate an alley or whatever, and half of the alley is in town jurisdiction, half of it's in county's jurisdiction. That's the long Roberta, that's annexation of two thousand and one.
Okay, that's, that's north of one four.
Yes.
Actually, I think that the annexation line is on one side of the alley or the other. I don't think...
Nothing on that one center.
It very well could be. I didn't draw according to where it's actually being.
I believe, we had a good question, we ran into quite an issue, and I think this board, we had that discussion, the road master at the time. I could be wrong, but I remember... It's not part of this, but it's something we need to be cleaned up.
Yeah, I'd like to get clarified so we know.
Well, I have the least questions about the Red Rock and Cavernous Road. That's straightforward and it's lots of stuff.
And the solar is, is straightforward, isn't it?
It is for me too, but I, I'm still, I'm still a little bit wondering about the roads themselves. Sometimes we're doing this and blocking things up, but it's not a hanging me up issue. So that just brings us to the last one, that Riverdale, S Street.
Darryl?
Yes.
Count all the numbers that are not in town out, like ninety-seven, ninety-six, sixty-five, sixty-four, sixty-three, what was that? Discuss those.
Ninety-seven, ninety-six, sixty-five, sixty-four, sixty-three, sixty-two.
Sixty-two.
Uh, sixty-seven, sixty-six. Half of block sixty-seven and sixty-eight and sixty-six are not.
When stuff is annexed in, once again, back to the zone, just some passive questions as far as building goes, how do you know, like, let's say it's part commercial, part residential, how do you guys know which to put it in? Is that something you have to go in front of the state to do the zoning part again? Or is that just something you guys decide, we think this needs to be residential, we think it's commercial, stuff that's surrounding it?
Well, I thought all that was zoned already. I mean, Jeff, do you have an answer for that? Because, you know, we're rezoning like Don Lasley's right now.
Okay.
Into commercial, because that was a request from him to put that, he came to us for that request.
Yeah.
And I guess if we took it that way, it would be if, if a developer came to us and said we'd rather have commercial or whatever, you know, then we would have to go, you know, before DLCD and get that zone changed.
Right. But right now, if it was both a commercial and residential, what way would you go? What way would that probably go?
I think it would follow what is zoned out.
Okay.
The other ordinances, when the attorney prepared them, when the town's annexing the property, it's stuck with existing zoning. The only ones we've had trouble with is where the town doesn't have a comparable zone.
Yeah.
I remember there was some ag land out by the Fremont Sommeal, or, what was the other end of the company? I'm sorry.
Iford Grolin?
Yeah. There was some ag related land.
Yeah.
We had a little, we had to put that into the ordinance to address that.
Oh, okay.
Because the town didn't have agriculture zoning.
And are you able, just as the town municipality, able to put that in? Or do you have to go in front of the state to put that in? Is that just something that it absorbs?
We're able to, as, when we absorb it, if we decide to go that route, that's something we're able to do as part of the ordinance, as long as you dictate it upfront. And that would all be, if it ever goes that direction, that would all be planned into that. So again, it would most likely just keep the current uses with a grandfathering in, for example, like Forty Second Group, to, you know, maintain the current use, and then if they need to do something different, the variance process. But that would be future down the road, where a developer will come to us and we have to go through a planning process before that.
Yeah, I don't think we can change.
Anupzoni.
Yeah, right.
Nope. And it's also not worth the headache for us to change the property's current use if it gets brought in. That just, that makes no sense. It's more work than we would need to go. Plus then you're triggering more potential state oversight and...
Does that answer your question?
I think so. I believe so. Mine was mainly more so like if you're close to res, not, not with the ag part of it at this point. Residential and commercial kind of being close to each other, you know.
Which way do you go?
Out like that, which way would you go?
You're good for that?
Well, good until we have justice.
Yeah.
See you tomorrow.
I guess, if I heard correct, if we were to agree to this, you don't have your annexation language put together at this point. So we wouldn't know what the language would be as far as the impact to the current residents, businesses that are there as far as you have opportunity to annex in, you will be forced to annex in. That language hasn't been put together of how you guys would annex all this in.
The Town of Lakeview does not have, we follow the state statutes that are out there. We don't have anything in our charter that has special requirements for annexation. So they're subject to the general annexation rules that exist with the state of Oregon. We don't get more specific. We don't have, certain places have electoral requirements and things like that for these. The, the town has adopted purely the current state statute regime for that. So if.
And quotes the O R S or O A N R, you don't need to announce a sentence in the letter.
Yeah. No, it's a general annexation chapter we have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I like to read it all, and there's some dramatic about that, and we'll have it done for tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all. On your next meeting. Okay, as we said earlier, we're a little out of schedule. Ann's gonna be, she's one of our presenters today, and she's gonna be in a webinar here at eleven o'clock. So she's got some really pertinent information during her department update. Well, I don't think she, you can ask her if you would.
If she's got time, yeah.
Fifteen minutes.
I think it's fifty minutes as much.
Well, I doubt it is, but she had said something about downloading it. Because it's, it's not really that interactive, but I'll leave that up to her.
Dave, on that island, is there any way you can put a financial impact to the amount that if everybody was annexed in at one time?
Financial impact to the landlords or to what, to the county versus?
Well, I, I guess to the landlords, whatever, if we make these type of decisions and it impacts that many residents. And, and it's going to personally impact me also. By, this could create a pretty large revenue stream all the time.
So you want this one ready?
Well, I, I don't know that I, I'm just curious. Maybe it's the number of residents within that island.
Ann, are you gonna have enough time?
Yeah, a lot of units we can start.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So the first item is a community development loan extension request that I received a letter. That should be attached to your package information. This is for a company involved in Sunstone Lane. It was a very slow summer for them, not as much visitors in that area. They're a little bit unsure of the reason why. Some of it can just be the conversations held statewide and nationally on the mining explosions. So anyhow, they're asking for an extension through November twenty seventeen, and then the payments would resume in December and just extend their whole contract out, so the new pay-off date would be in January twenty nineteen.
So we have that on tomorrow's agenda, and I think we'll need additional, the special one for tomorrow if there is to be.
Sounds good. Department updates. So the Pilt flying. Great trip. Thanks for allowing me to go on Lake County's behalf. I felt it was a very important message to send back east. And in Washington DC about the Pilt payment for Lake County and the connection with S R S and how that payment impacts the Pilt formula. So the first meetings I had were on Wednesday with Naco staff, Jonathan Shuffield and Deborah Cox. Jonathan Shuffield at that time did state that the proposed Secure Rule of Schools reauthorization language includes that the first payment be retroactive and be considered a prior federal year payment as far as the Pilt calculation is concerned, which is good news. If they can get that passed. Also, Naco had estimated full funding of Pilt without S R S at six hundred and forty million. But that was a couple of years ago. So some of my estimates, and I don't, I think all of you have this spreadsheet that we've worked up.
Thank you.
Using Oregon as a base, the full funding level for Pilt could be as much as seven hundred million. But Oregon is such a high S R S state, it kind of skews it. Naco though thinks their six hundred and forty million is low. So seven hundred million might be an okay figure to talk about. So on Wednesday, we met with Congressman Walden. He's very supportive of Pilt and S R S and understands the overall reductions to Oregon, especially with that spreadsheet highlighting specifically what it does to every county.
Might want to throw in the word now?
Now?
Yeah, he didn't go forward.
No, yeah, he, he did feel like Pilt alone was a fair and equitable payment, but until we showed that we don't even get the minimum thirty-seven cents an acre, he started changing his philosophy on reauthorization of S R S. He still is supportive of reauthorization of S R S, but the conversation stems around the pay-for. Senator Hatch supposedly, Senator Hatch from Utah supposedly has a pay-for. But Walden wasn't, he, he didn't seem very confident that the pay-for would work in the House. It might work according to the Senate rules and things like that, where that legislation will be proposed, not should have worked in the House side. On Wednesday afternoon, I met with Department of Interior staff, Deanna Karen. She is hands-on in the Pilt calculations for the nation. She talked about the timing of the data that is required every year that goes into spitting out this formula for nineteen hundred counties across the nation. The data call goes out in late January, early February. So depending on the timing of the S R S legislation and payment and what states choose to do with that S R S money, they cannot say for sure that it will occur prior to next June's Pilt payment. In fact, they have reservations. They also have reservations about telling Congress what a full funding amount is right now. Because that data call to every state provides so much information to them. So it's not until they get that information back from the states that they can go, okay, Congress, full funding means six hundred and eighty million. A lot of moving parts, if you can imagine that, they, it's, it's so much worse than my admin fee. So a lot, a lot goes into that.
That says a lot.
That goes a lot into that nation, nationwide calculation. On Thursday, I was in a group that consisted of Commissioner DeGroot from Clamott County, Commissioner Beveridge from Union County, Commissioner Sukla from Colorado, lobbyist Bob Weidner, who represents several Colorado counties, and Naco staffer Arthur Scott. Our group really was very complimentary for each other. We were able to kind of fill in for each other's stories and have different bases of knowledge for our specific counties. So we worked really well together, met with several representatives and senators, all of whom were very supportive of Pilt and S R S. But we were not convinced, they were fully aware of the lack of S R S funding has. I'm not sure they understood that, that connection, that without full S R S, when you say you're supportive of fully funding Pilt, what that number means. And again, the S R S reauthorization of pay-for is.
So before you go any further, it might be really helpful to allude to the amount that Congress right now believes is fully funded and what they plan to put in the budget or put in the budget, that dollar figure.
Okay, right now, in fact, while we were back there, Congress did a continuing resolution that funds government for three more months to December eighth. That includes the twenty seventeen allocation for Pilt, which is four hundred and sixty-five million. If we're looking at a seven hundred million dollar full-funded payment, that's a sixty-six percent level payment. That would mean Lake County would get about seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. We budgeted nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's a two hundred and ten thousand dollar reduction. And that's, according to how we've operated in the past, that's very conservative. I think we need to have that number on our head though, because it should only get better from here. I don't see it getting worse. That's, that's the number in the continuing resolution, is four hundred and sixty-five million. I mean, again, nineteen hundred counties that affect this calculation is going to adjust. But depending on what Congress does with S R S, that number will improve. And depending on as they move forward in actually approving a twenty eighteen budget, that number can improve as well. But for right now, with all the information we have, they've appropriated Pilt at four hundred and sixty-five million.
So it's kind of also important to note, when you mention what we put in our budget, that has always been our operational mode, is to be conservative because our full payment is one point one whatever. So really, if all this played out and all that you keep going, because you're, you're on roll. But we're talking about a four hundred thousand dollar or thereabouts shortfall.
Right, from fully funded level for sure. Yes. So back to the meetings of that day, it was obviously great to see how everything operates back there. I mean, they could be in offices right next door to each other, but sometimes they're not talking to each other until, you know, if we really need to or have to. Just on a side note, I walked ten point eight miles that day, so I met all kinds of homeless folks. So it was very, me and our group was great to work with. Naco staff is excellent as far as getting you where you need to be and helping prompt the message every now and then if we were getting off track, because it's easy to do. I mean, we start talking about fires and smoke and things like that, and it's like, okay, we steer us back into why we're here, and that's the importance of Pilt. On Friday morning, we met with Scott Cannon, the Trump-appointed Assistant Director for Policy and Budget for the Department of Interior. We kept calling him the gentleman of the long title. He talked about Secretary Zinke's top ten priorities that strive to strike a balance between sustained use of resources, but increasing revenues and conservation while restoring trust in good neighbor principles. So there are some things coming out of Secretary Zinke's office that I think we are seeing points to that. I don't know if you guys saw Cynthia Moses of Med emailed just the other day about webinars and the EPA process and NIPA process and how they're trying to get more involvement from the local levels before they just come out with rules. I think two point oh, rule two point oh was an eye-opener, and they're trying to just become a better partner all the way around. So my takeaway were these. Again, while we spoke, everybody we spoke with was very supportive of S R S and Pilt. There's just not quite maybe the political ability to change the train that's already moving. So even though they say they're supportive of it, coming up with the reauthorization for S R S seems very difficult. Like I said to Dan, if these pay-fors are so hard to find and so few and far between, it just seems like they need to start looking at other options of balancing, maybe balancing. But paying for things that constituents find very important to us. Yes.
She said everybody you talked to was fully supportive. Is, who is the contingency that's not, that you didn't talk to that is not supported?
Well, I think the whole group feels like everybody says they're in support of it. That's the beauty, to be honest, that's the beauty of being in Congress. You can say you support it till the cows come home, but when it comes down to finding the dollars to make it happen?
Well, and Ann, that's, the proof is in the pudding. If the pay-for is found, then we know how many support it when they vote on it.
Right. So again, that, they're in support. One, one of the things Naco thought would be beneficial is maybe some of those eastern states that are not as heavily Pilt property counties, pairing those represent, you know, commissioners and county representatives with those of us from the western states that are. Because sometimes even just the local level commissioners hearing west, western stories, then they understand too. We had thirty people there, spreading that group even thinner than what we did, I think would have been difficult to do. So my group, like I said, had about five people on it. So it's not like you're talking to everybody on the hill. You're, you're hitting the, the people that are sitting in positions to remove some of these things for, as Naco has determined, so. Lastly, I, Washington DC is a beautiful city honoring heritage and history. I hope everyone tries to make it back there. That was the third time I've been there. The Holocaust Museum was something I hadn't seen in the past, so it's very moving. So I, it's just a great city for people to go see. It's on your list, and it's an affordable, I feel like affordable city when you look at those museums, there's no cost to go see them, so.
And when you walk? When I was back there last time, I walked about eight miles.
Yeah, every day I was putting on ten to twelve miles a day, so, yeah, and I like that, so.
Well, Ann, I think it goes without saying how much we appreciate your willingness to go back. And you do have quite definite support. You were the right person to go, not just for Lake County, but for the state of Oregon. Mike MacArthur acknowledged that earlier this spring when we first started the discussion about you going back to the flying. Hopefully you, you'll be up for it as we move forward on some of these things. And the real message that I had hoped we'd get out of today, so I'm gonna ask you just one point. When we talk about our planning, because we have no assurance that they will find a pay-for, that they'll move this in time, you know, the date that you worked with the, the Pilt folks here on up was contrary to what Naco talked about with the legislation by Senator Hatch. So that's kind of a material thing right now, but it's important to remember that if S R S isn't funded or funded in time, we would see those kind of potential reductions. And if we do that, then it's going to be incumbent upon not just the board, but the whole county family to work on figuring out in our existing year budget, how do we make up that difference of, of revenue shortfall? And so I, I'm thinking that we don't want to take on any new fixed costs. There's going to be things that we continue to do, it's just as part of our business, we'll figure out the other. But fixed cost-wise, I think it would be a huge mistake with the potential outlook on the revenue shortfall to do that.
Absolutely. Two hundred and ten thousand dollar revenue deficit that we can talk about right now, that's the information we have before us. Is it going to end up being that at June thirtieth? We don't know yet. Information's going to change, but our practice has always been to be as conservative as possible with the information we have. That's the information we have, is we're looking at something less than what we budgeted. And fixed costs that we can't even afford right now with the information, let alone going forward in the future as personnel costs go up and things like that, no, it would be very difficult from my position to support anything like that.
Well, and that's for this year.
Yes.
As we look at the other money that we didn't budget in the Pilt formula that we, you know, historically get full funding, one point four, one point one six.
Really close to one point two.
Okay, so that's another two hundred thousand in the back of our mind we need to account for because historically it's been there when we got that June payment in all of a sudden. It wasn't a surprise, but we planned it that way. That money also won't be there, it won't just be our expenditures this year, it'll be the impact on next year's budget.
So, and I, I've. So, um, and I, I've been working on quite a few things since I've been back, but your September cash flow summary that I provided at the end of every single month, you're going to see a new Pilt number in June of twenty eighteen. That will show that our beginning plan balance that we're predicting for July first twenty eighteen is going to be significantly less than we've ever had in quite a few years. So you're gonna start seeing those numbers that'll help kind of keep that in the back of your head and remind you, if this, if Congress does nothing, this is what we're looking at. Let's hope they do something, and, and we're gonna continue to talk about it. And then when they do something, we'll have new information. But right now, the information we have is the number I'm gonna use in those cash flow summaries to predict going forward.
Yeah. Well, appreciate you going back to Washington.
It was, again, I.
I'd like to see you go back tomorrow.
Well, here's, I'm not, I'm, you need to be careful with that statement, because every now and then I give an opinion that you might not agree with. I did open my mouth when Walden talked about let burn policies. I said, I don't know any let burn policies in our Fremont, Wyoming, National Forest or Villas, you know, there's no let burn here. We let something burn, it's because of firefighter safety. And I said, I could, I could talk about that, but.
That's a progress suppression strategy.
But let's argue, you never know what the fire's gonna do, and that's a big liability.
Right.
Well, appreciate you coming in and on real quick. I know you want to be back for that webinar. Ann is with Tiger Grant and stuff, and she's in ten, three, seven hours this week, she's setting out three webinars this week, so thank you, Ann.
Ginger and Betty have been providing a lot of information.
Right.
They too with different things on water costs.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Darwin, let's go back to catching up here.